Good evening, everyone. I'm Deborah Lockwood, Chair of the Washington County Planning Commission. Today is March 20th, 2024, and this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. May we have the roll call, please? I think we're still waiting for Commissioner Frye's on the screen up there.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Commissioner Frye has just joined. Commissioner Kaiser.
He didn't go off. You're pretty acknowledged.
Okay. And Commissioner McLendon.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Milliman is absent this evening. Commissioner Montblanco? Thank you. Commissioner Will also will be absent this evening. Commissioner Whipps?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Maury Bidu?
Present.
And Chair Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you. We have... I'm sorry. Seven Commissioners present, and we do have a call. Thank you. May we have the Director's Report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lockwood. My name is Erin Wardell, and I am the Planning and Development Services Manager here at Washington County. We have a very brief Director's Report this evening. I'd like to ask everyone to mark their calendars for April 25th. That will be the county's 2024 Volunteer Appreciation Celebration, and we will send you an email following up about this. It's an opportunity for the county to thank all of the volunteer members of our boards and commissions, and it's held at the Wingspan Event Center from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. We'll provide you with more information about that event. Additionally, as you may have heard, the 2024 Oregon Legislature completed their work for this year. Some of the outcomes of legislation will affect some of the planning work that we do, and so we are planning to do a work session briefing for the Planning Commission sometime later this spring. There is an upcoming board meeting on April 2nd, where they'll have their first hearing for Ordinance 900, the minor updates to the Transportation System Plan, which the Planning Commission recommended unanimously to the Board of Commissioners. So that'll be on April 2nd. For today's Planning Commission meeting, you just have a work session item, an update on our Significant Natural Resources project. For the two April meetings, we're a little bit light on agenda items. That would be April 3rd and April 17th. So at this time, staff are recommending that we cancel both of those meetings, and then we will reconvene in May. And that concludes the Director's Report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the report? Is there any hands up? All right, thank you. Public communication, has anyone signed up? We have no one signed up for public communication. And seeing only staff in room and online, I don't believe we have anyone here. All right, thank you. Work session. Significant Natural Resources update.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Lockwood and Commissioners. I'm Michelle Miller. I'm a Senior Planner here in Community Planning Section of Planning and Development Services. I'm here this evening to give you a preview of the presentation we're going to be giving at the Spring Community Forum scheduled tomorrow night over at the Washington Street Conference Center. So I'd encourage you all to attend or tell your family and friends about this event. So this is kind of a practice run for me for getting ready for tomorrow's forum. So for those new to the Planning Commission, we've been working on this project for over a year now, and we have a lot to share with this presentation as we're moving forward with developing our code language for the natural resources. I'll be sharing some background and talking about our inventory work to date. We're also going to be unveiling kind of for the first time tonight with the public some of the code concepts we've been working on over this past winter, and we're excited to learn what you think. And so there'll be time for discussion and questions at the end of the presentation. But I also thought with the Planning Commission, we'd stop after I give some of the overview and background in case you have any questions at that time. So first, we'll be going over the background of the project for those that are just hearing about the project now or and are joining us for the first time tonight. The county's natural resources, like our streams and our forests, provide essential habitat for fish and wildlife and are an important part of our planning process. State law and statewide planning goal five require that we balance natural resource protection with other important land uses, like housing and transportation. We've had some legal challenges to the county's Significant Natural Resource Regulations that require us to make these changes. The Washington County Board of Commissioners asked us to update our natural resource inventory map for the urban unincorporated areas of the county as part of the project, since they had not been updated since the early 1980s. And so we're sharing our work to date, and tonight we hope to hear your thoughts on the changes that we're working on to our draft regulations. So our Significant Natural Resources are following the Goal Five process, and this graphic kind of shows the three main steps in our general outline for following the statewide planning goal five. It begins with identifying the natural resources. Because it's an update to our project, we don't necessarily need to start at the beginning of the inventory process because we have an existing natural resource inventory. When the inventory work is complete, we'll move on to step two, the analysis phase, or kind of we call it the show your work phase, where we consider the different land uses and that those activities that might conflict with the natural resources, and consider whether and to what degree to protect the resources or to allow that land use activity. And then the final step is to take that analysis, weighing and balancing all those impacts to the natural resources to come up with policies and regulations that have taken that analysis into account and those impacts. So here's the project schedule broken down by the various tasks within the Goal Five process. You can see that there's some back and forth between the different steps. Inventory update has been taking the most time as it feeds into the ESEE analysis and developing the regulations. Once we get the maps and code language where we'd like to have them later on this spring, we'll be bringing our draft code and maps to the County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners for public hearings on the code language. The Board can decide to adopt the updated map and code language or ask that we make further changes. So now I'm going to talk a little bit more about the inventory update that we've been doing to our natural resources for our urban unincorporated areas. This map shows the urban area of Washington County with grayish tan colors showing the incorporated or city areas and the blue and orange area encompassing the urban unincorporated area or our study area. The blue area is what we call the map refinement area. These are the areas where we're doing most of our work in our mapping and our analysis and was part of the original inventory work the county did in the 1980s. The orange areas or the new community planning areas are where adjacent cities are doing most of the planning, including the mapping of the natural resources. So we started with the county's 1980s inventory and the Metro's 2000 inventory, Metro, the regional government. We were not doing any new inventory mapping with this project. That was not the direction that was given to us by the Board. So this map shows a comparison of how that looks for the Bethany area, the Significant Natural Resources in the Bethany area. The county's Significant Natural Resources map is on the left with the water or riparian habitat in blue and the wildlife habitat in green. The Metro map is shown on the right, and that was done in the early 2000s. And you can see the development that has occurred in between those two times. The resources there for the upland habitat are shades of green and the riparian are shades of blue. And the reason for that is the Metro's maps are classified based on their quality of habitat, which the county's mapping do not contain that level of detail. So our consultant team worked to combine these maps through our ARC GIS system so that we'll have one consolidated map that will be evaluated. And once the maps were consolidated, we relied on Metro's riparian habitat layer over the counties because it was required for Metro compliance with the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan Title 13. It also shifted some of the county's wildlife habitat to riparian habitat as there was some overlap with Metro's upland habitat, Class A and B. And so after combining both of the Metro and the county inventory maps of the natural resources, we'll have a consolidated version of that same Bethany area. And this map shows the natural resources called riparian habitat, like the streams and the vegetation along the streams in blue and the areas of upland or the treat areas, often a bit further away from the riparian habitat, in shades of orange and yellow on this map. So through the update process, we're looking at the mapped areas where their natural resources are no longer considered significant from when they were originally mapped from the county or by Metro. So it includes the developed areas or areas where the habitat has become more fragmented or the habitat patch has become very small. Other areas where the sites have been developed or have already been through a land use review process, like Clean Water Services, and so the development area has been identified more precisely with that. And then we took comments from the public maybe on their property and continued to do a manual review and cleanup. And then finally, we're including city or metro data for the areas added to the urban growth boundaries since our original inventory was complete. So we're still taking comments on the inventory map. If people feel that the map is not accurate, we're going to be reviewing the comments and recommending those potential changes. Once complete, the map is going to be included in the documents that will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and later adopted by the Board. We understand the maps might not be perfect. Our new regulations will include a process to address the map errors that might occur. Now I'm going to move on to... Oh, right. Do you have any questions at this stage about the inventory?
Thank you. I'm wondering about... We had a rough idea, at least, of the acreage with the old map. And do you have a rough idea yet of what acreage you'll end up with?
We're getting a little bit closer to that final number.
I don't think we have it yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have some finesse to do because some of the areas are from the maps that will be added by the data that the cities provide and those areas. And so the numbers are kind of all jumbled together, so it's not... That analysis hasn't been done to give you that good piece of concrete information yet that I can kind of confirm.
So since you started with data that was from the 80s, and what is that, 40 years ago? The assumption is it'll be less overall, or yes?
Well, with respect to the riparian habitat, that kind of stays within the same area. The one thing that we're requesting that be added are some of the important high-value habitat that Metro mapped that the county maybe didn't map. So there'll be areas that will be added there to be included that will up the amount potentially of wildlife habitat that we had, that we called wildlife habitat. Another change is areas that have been added to the urban growth boundary since the early 1980s, and that was primarily mapped by Metro, really not the county. The county kind of put a buffer around the original 1980s mapping. So that's where a lot of upland habitat will be added as well. So that'll give almost, in some sense, a more accurate representation and a little bit more area. There are areas that are in parks and that have already been designated that we're keeping in the upland or the natural areas that are in the upland or riparian area as well.
So we're still trying to figure out how to show all of these things because some land that we mapped as upland actually is riparian because our mapping wasn't the greatest. And with more current or better data, you find that it's actually... It has water underneath all of those trees. So we don't have an apples-to-apples kind of comparison now. But Michelle was saying that we are adding some Metro upland wildlife habitat. We're proposing to add that that hadn't been on our maps before. But then we're taking out areas that have been developed, and so there's a lot of moving pieces there. But we will, before the end of this, we will have some numbers, some acreages.
And a much more accurate picture.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have what may be an obvious question. Who's actually doing the mapping? Are these like county employees? Are these outside consultants? And then kind of related to that, you know, we're allowing comments on the inventory map. How is that weighed against, you know, the people that are actually out there with, you know, the credentials to create these maps? I mean, how much weight does the citizens comment on the map weigh in on that?
Great question. So it's a combination of consultant team. We have environmental consultants from DEA. We also are using our GIS staff as well to help with some of the mapping issues. We're using a little bit of historical information that we know from our property or some of our files or our development files that kind of show where some of the important habitat has been located when a project would come in. It's basically a computer GIS exercise to look at the existing maps that we compiled as well as Metro's mapping. And that's what we're evaluating, those two basic maps. We also looked at some of the information to help support whether a site might be a significant habitat using a mapping that was done by Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. They've compiled some wildlife corridor mapping. We have some mapping that Metro or the Intertwine Alliance used for identifying important oak habitat. And so those layers were all kind of created on top of each other to kind of look and assess to decide which of these areas or properties should be considered significant. Our methodology for the project, our draft methodology, is online now. If you're interested in taking a look at that to kind of show what criteria we used for the different assessments of whether something was developed or whether the site should be retained as significant.
Great.
But a lot of it does have to do with looking at the aerial photography at where dense wooded areas are. And that's a key criteria. We also have GIS layers for where water courses are and that sort of thing. So we're kind of assessing that along with where the development occurred. We have the building footprints, and so we're taking those areas out because they have been developed. So it's that kind of an exercise.
And using the professional judgments of our environmental consultants.
I'm just wondering of a situation where, you know, for instance, what if the map said that this area wasn't riparian and a landowner nearby said, you know, half the year that land is underwater? What kind of follow-up would be done to verify whether or not it's riparian or not?
So in that case, if the area isn't mapped on our inventory by Metro or included in that inventory, it would not be included in... We're not adding any of the area aside from what Metro or the county has mapped. But that area, when it would come in for a development application, would need to be, like any project, would need to go through the Clean Water Services process. And so if it was, if they went through that screening process and Clean Water Services said that they indicate that there might be something to evaluate, then we would follow what Clean Water Services recommendations are for that project. So it would be captured, so to speak, and through the development process.
Okay.
So we haven't gotten into the regulations yet, but what happens is by being on the map, it means there's potentially something there. And then you have to go through the process to verify that and then to look at trees essentially in the area. So there's, by being on the map, it doesn't... That's the first step. That's the first part of it. Then that means something might be there, go to our regulations.
Great. Thank you.
I think I'm a little confused on what's considered high value versus significant. And like, who decides that? And is it like a tier?
So we're using the system that Metro had classified the habitat with their mapping and their inventory mapping. For riparian habitat, we're just kind of... We're calling it riparian habitat without the classifications for the purposes of our mapping. And for the upland habitat areas, we haven't really reached a decision on how that was going to... How that's, if we're going to be using different classifications or if that's going to be just a straight upland habitat for the regulatory purposes. It's not... The way it looks right now, the upland habitat areas, there won't be a distinction in how they're regulated any differently.
All upland habitat right now would be treated the same?
Mm-hmm, in the regulations.
Okay. But as we're doing the mapping and we're reviewing what Metro did in their mapping, the upland A and B were... Sometimes there wasn't a lot of difference, we didn't think, between those two classifications. But they did look at, I think, density of tree cover. They looked at how close it was to the riparian area because the trees, the water-related area is probably the most critical area for habitat, both for fish and for other forms of wildlife. And so the closer you are to that, the better it is for kind of connected, that connectivity idea that it's a corridor. Plants and animals are kind of going through there. And so the closer it is to that, probably the better for the classification. And then if it's a larger swath of area that's connected to that, that's considered higher priority and higher value. So we're kind of eliminating some areas that don't meet those kind of criteria. And sometimes it matches well with what is considered A and B, and sometimes it doesn't. So our environmental consultant is helping with that as well.
Yeah, so he will look at a site. Maybe it's changed since 2000, and it maybe has become more fragmented, so it kind of lowers the value and would fall off. So we're thinking that we want to preserve the highest value, like what, based on kind of the criteria that Teresa spoke.
Actually, you mentioned fragmentation, and that's also one. Some of these areas through development, they're separated from the rest of the area by roads, from other development. They have a lot of development kind of around them, and so maybe they're not providing the quality of habitat that they did at one time.
Go ahead, please. Okay. Oh, thank you.
Oh, so thanks, Chair. I was just wondering, I know that we've used this data in the past for decision-making purposes, for example, for changing roads, setting aside areas for roads and things like that. But could you also speak to other uses of the final report?
The inventory. Well, I mentioned that the inventory report was...
Oh, the methodology? The inventory methodology, is that what you're talking about? Or the...
So I guess I'm just wondering, like, why? How are we going to use the data once the report is completed?
So we're working on the inventory right now, and we'll use that data to determine what areas are going to be... The areas that are mapped are going to be regulated in our regulations. So that's how we're going to use the inventory that we're doing. The updated, all of the areas that have natural resources that are significant will be part of our regulations. Will be the areas that are be regulated.
Thank you. Yeah, and that may become clearer as we go through this next section about what the regulations are.
Okay, so we'll move on to the code concepts. So you were right on point with what we were going to talk about next. So the regulations will apply to the areas that we identified on those inventory maps. And they'll be divided between the riparian habitat, like the wetlands, rivers and streams, and upland, those priority areas of forest and woodlands adjacent to the riparian areas that provide food, shelter, and mating sites for wildlife. And this graphic kind of shows the difference or the distinction of where the riparian habitat is located in proximity to the water and the upland, upland from the riparian area. It includes, both areas you can see include vegetation and some trees and will make up the Significant Habitat area that will be regulated. So as we started to consider the regulations for the natural resource area, we turned to the idea of adding requirements that focus on retaining and replacing trees when development occurs. As many of you who live on or nearby these natural resource areas, trees provide important habitat for wildlife and also other benefits to us as well. They clean our air and water and support our well-being. They are foundation species. So whenever trees are planted, wildlife and other plants flourish nearby along with all of the parts of trees that provide and serve many other different species. So very first broadly, broadly, the county's regulations will apply to the riparian and upland wildlife habitat areas. I'll be following up in more details on the next few slides. The draft regulations for riparian habitat are similar to what our current regulations are. Development is strictly limited near streams and stream banks and water-related resources. Some activities are allowed within these areas, but if a development impacts the riparian habitat, Clean Water Services, the requirements will apply. For upland wildlife habitat, the draft regulations will not change your allowed uses. And the focus will be on tree retention and replacement, providing different ways to meet that requirement. So the regulations will apply when there is map Significant Habitat on the property, and you are doing an activity that impacts the habitat, like building structures, removing trees, raiding or dividing the land. So what is considered development? Development, as defined in the county's rules, are an intentional change to land, constructing or adding buildings, dividing land into smaller parcels, removing trees in a Significant Habitat area, or changing the... removing trees in a significant habitat area or changing the grounds, like, uh, grading, paving or excavating. Now a few details about the riparian habitat regulations. For the riparian habitat regulations, we're not changing the fundamentals of our current regulations. Development is strictly limited, but some development activities are allowed. If a development impacts the riparian habitat, clean water services requirements will likely apply. And if you're impacting the riparian habitat vegetation, you'll need to replant native vegetation along the water areas and removal of invasive plants is important. So there are some land act, land use activities that are allowed within the riparian habitat, like transportation facilities, public utilities, trails, stream or bank restoration work. One single dwelling, uh, unit, if there's not any buildable, otherwise buildable area on the property and restoration or mitigation that would be required by another agency, like the Department of State Lands or the Corps of Engineers. So next I'll move on to the upland wildlife habitat details. Our intention with the upland wildlife habitat regulation is to balance the protection of habitat for the, those trees with housing, other development needed by our communities. Our draft regulations will also need to show a path for development that's clear and objective. Keeping that in mind, the draft regulations will not change your allowed land uses. You will be able to develop your property. It includes standards for tree retention and replacement that apply when trees in the upland wildlife habitat are impacted by the development. The regulations will include a requirement to retain or preserve the trees you will need to replace, um, and you will need to replace a certain percentage of trees. And, and we plan to include a simpler process for smaller projects on individual properties. Along with this clear and objective path, we are looking at alternatives for optional or discretionary approaches, uh, to the tree standards. So we're considering some exceptions to the tree retention and removal requirements. So, um, to include things like hazardous, diseased or dying trees, um, invasive tree species, trees that are in tree farms or on tree nurseries, trees that are under six inches in diameter, trees located within ten feet of an existing house, trees that might be on a development site with only a very, very small amount of significant habitat, and trees that are underground, uh, near underground utilities like water or sewer lines. So now I'm gonna run through how the tree regulations would work on a site using this drawing as an example of a property with map significant habitat. The tree regulations would apply to all the areas within the significant habitat area but are outside the verified riparian habitat boundary, um, that area shown in blue. Um, and, but, and so it would be the green areas or the upland habit, where the upland habitat is located. Remember that there are different rules for the riparian habitat that strictly limit the activity and where the clean water services rules would apply. The yellow arrow, arrow points to the outer significant habitat boundary for this drawing. Shown here, the tree regulations would apply to the screen area, but not the blue hatched area where the verified riparian habitat is located. So here's that same drawing showing the trees on the site. Some of the trees are shaded gray. Those are the regulated trees that I will talk about in the next slide. Some of the trees on the, on the drawing are not regulated. They're outlined in this sketch and are located in the white areas outside the significant habitat boundary. Or are the trees in the verified riparian habitat, that blue area, that blue hatched area in the sketch. So the first step in the process would be to require a surveyor or an arborist, um, to prepare a tree inventory of the regulated trees. Those are the trees that are over six inches in diameter at breast height within the significant habitat boundary, but outside the verified riparian habitat shown in blue. Then a table would be submitted that tells us more about the trees and its characteristics, like size, location and health, and whether the applicant needs to remove this tree for development. Each regulated tree would get a tree value score or point that allows us to prioritize a certain types of trees, like our native trees, our larger trees, um, certain species and our trees that are close to the riparian habitat. We believe that certain trees are more important, so we'll give them more points to, uh, to encourage retention of those trees. Like those large trees, native trees and closer to the riparian habitat. So then the applicant would need to do a bit of math by adding up the total points from the inventory and subtract the points for the trees that are removed. If this percentage is less than the regulations requirement, the developer can plant or preserve smaller existing trees to make up the difference. So the county's current standards already require mitigation for upland wildlife habitat, but they're subjective and inconsistently applied. And so that provides uncertainty for the community and develop, and developers alike. The code concept is to provide a clear and objective method of calculating what mitigation is. The tree inventory approach does provide that clear and objective path for limiting impacts to the upland wildlife habitat and ensures a certain percentage of the tree value points are maintained on the site. So Metro Title thirteen has different requirements for upland habitat on lands that were added to the urban growth boundary af- um, uh, before two thousand and, uh, after two thousand and six. So areas that were inside the urban growth boundary before two thousand and six would re- could require a, a different tree value points. And we're, we're, um, contemplating, um, fifty percent of the total tree value points need to be, um, accounted for. For areas added to the urban growth boundary after two thousand and six, um, Metro has requirements for the, for that upland habitat area and that retention or replacement, um, requirement of eighty percent, um, is what we're looking at for the total tree value points for those areas. So here is an example of how a subdivision project might look, um, from our example earlier. Um, it looks like some of the shaded regulated tree, trees needed to be removed for this development. Therefore, the developer would need to replant in a significant habitat area to meet the minimum point target for the trees that need to be replaced. So keeping that, the trees in the green area is the deal. So in addition to the clear and objective path described, um, earlier, it might be helpful to provide an alternative discretionary approach, um, or alternative optional approach to, for mitigation, because all sites are gonna be different and not all sites might, may be able to have the clear and objective path. So some alternatives we're continuing to explore include, um, a certain amount of significant habitat is placed in a canopy preservation area and a certain percentage of that tree canopy must be maintained with a deed restriction and maintenance, um, for that canopy preservation area. And so this would be an optional alternative for applicants.
And I'll just say one thing on that, so state law allows us to do this and I think many jurisdictions do do this. The idea is that there, you provide some flexibility, but you're still providing a, a similar level of protection. Um, so it's not, both are supposed to be, um, similar in what they do, but, um, some sites may, may do better with this kind of approach. Because again, we're balancing the housing development or the kind of development with the protection of the resources. Um, and so that's the idea here.
So the, um, I got one approach that's very mathematical. So how do you define canopy and, you know, as an alternative method? Uh huh. So that, we're, we're going to, um, use some of the work that we did with the, um, the earlier ordinance had, uh, canopy requirements and, and definitions, um, getting kind of that, um, baseline there. And canopy can sometimes be, um, subjective. So we wanna have an approach that is kind of an alternative that, um, aside from the clear and objective appro- approach, as long as it matches the, the, the outcome of the clear and objective approach. So more, a little more to come on that. We're in the early stages of what, what that might look like and how, how that would match with the clear and objective path.
But we are seeing, but how much of the approach that we took in eight sixty-nine can we, can we preserve? But have it be an, an option, um, so it wouldn't have to be the approach that was taken, but it could be an option. And so we, we did develop, um, habitat assessment guidelines and our consultants, I think, will be looking at that and seeing how much of that can we use in developing this, this as an option.
So would this always require, I'm sorry, a scientist to check it out or? It would likely, um, requires, uh, someone with environmental expertise. Um, that, that was a common requirement from our regulations before a habit, a habitat assessment was, was required. So we'll, we'll likely have that same requirement and will need to be a natural resource professional.
Commissioner Kaiser has handed.
Yeah, thank you, I can't see, thank you for. Commissioner Kaiser.
Uh, I just have a question on, when, when we look at deed restrictions and maintenance for canopy preservation, uh, this gets to cost, right? Uh, along also with the, uh, you know, on each, let's say on each individual de- development parcel when we go forward, what the cost is gonna be, uh, to actually do this work. I know none of us know that for sure. But one thing I wanna make sure that we're talking about during this process is, is that it's, it's really easy to put deed restrictions and maintenance requirements on canopy preservation and or, uh, environmental preservation. But the question of where, who pays for it matters. Cause a lot of times this either gets passed through to a developer via bond for a certain period of time and then is shifted to, to homeowners in particular, or it is directly shifted to a homeowners association, which then thereby drives up that, that price of the homeowners association dues. So talking a little bit or keeping an eye on that during this process matters. Um, lot of restrictions get flowed down, flowed down to those two, uh, groups and that just increases the cost of housing, increases the difficulty to actually pay to live in housing. So just, if, if there's anything we could talk about there, has there been any discussion of that? Are we gonna wait till E S E E analysis to talk about that?
Though, those are good points and we'll, we'll pass that along, that's, that type of information is we're like weighing the option for, uh, for that, that component. But you're, you're right about, um, those alternatives would be HOA potentially or, um, and, and on the development itself.
And so this is, this is often done now. Um, I think the, the clear and objective approach that we're, they're looking at where it's tree, tree protection and tree points that are preserved. Um, we weren't looking at having, um, uh, having to have areas preserved in tracts. It was, uh, potentially an ongoing requirement, so, um, and, and we have actually started talking with the building industry about the different options we're looking at and kind of pros and cons and how, how it would work for them. Um, each option has different kinds of costs and when, when the costs are. So, uh, we'll continue to explore that, I think.
I think I see a couple hands up. Is that Commissioner Frye?
Uh, Commissioner Kaiser was first, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kaiser.
Commissioner Frye, I'd like to hear what you have to say first.
Thank you, um, I just had a, well, a couple, just general comments, um. My experience has been that everybody wants to save, save the trees and loves the trees until they're ba- behind their house. And then they complain about them and ask us to cut them down and, um, have all kinds of, um, uh, not so nice things to say to us about the trees that we saved behind their houses, especially after this last storm. Um, so that's a complicated thing, especially when you start talking about deed restrictions. And you get into times where people are gonna have to try and fight and say if they think something's unsafe or all the different questions people have. Um, but then my, my bigger question was, um, there's, uh, one of the slides was talking about totaling up your points and then if you're below a threshold, then like you're okay. But if you go beyond the threshold, then all of a sudden you need to do other things. Um, is there any, we have any like draft concept of what those levels are? Or kind of what's, what the threshold is or how those points are gonna be applied?
Um, we're, we're looking at, um, the total points. Um, you need to retain or replace fifty percent of the tree value points. So it would be really dependent on the trees that are located on site, on, on the site and how many points that the total comes to.
And we are, we have, um, a, a couple of case studies that we're looking at, kind of testing out the, the draft that we have now and the, how the points might work. And, um, so we're, we're looking for more, uh, sample projects. So if anyone has ideas for, uh, for projects that have been done that have a, a tree, tree inventory where we could run this on and could test it out is what we're trying to do before. Because there, it could be complicated and we want to test it out before, um, proposing it.
So it sounds like there are not established models that you can just replicate.
Our consultant has, has looked at a number of different jurisdictions. I think there are a number of different ways to do this kind of thing. Um, and we've asked her to, to look, to keep looking, um, and to keep giving us some ideas. Um, if, if there's a way possibly to simplify, but also to, to still try to, um, encourage preservation of the, the trees that we feel are probably the most important. So those ones that are closest to the riparian habitat, that are the largest, that are certain species like, um, we have the Gary oak and, um, the ponderosa pine and, uh, our, our beautus, the, um, medrone. So, um, to try to give those higher value. And by doing that, you get into the points. And so i- is there, is there a way that's not points, that's less complicated? So we're, we're still looking at that and, um, they're gonna do some more research on that. But that's the idea, to try to encourage, um, both those kinds of trees, as well as we've heard from other people. Um, if it's, if it's more, if a more connected area, can that have more points? So, um, and still be clear and objective. So that's the kind of balancing act that we're looking at.
And if I could just add to that too, part of the reason we're here right now is that these requirements for clear and objective standards came out and apply to other jurisdictions as well. It's not just us, but we were lucky enough to be the first legal case about it. And the state didn't provide us with a model code that we could just simply incorporate. So we're really kind of developing the model right now that others will be looking at um, and looking to update their codes with, to make their codes clear and objective. So this is really difficult work to do, that's why we've been in this legal back and forth that we've been caught in for the last number of years and that we're working really hard to get out of by developing solid, clear and objective standards.
Okay, so the fifty, eighty, those are applied to whatever your inventory is on site. Based on whatever standards we, points we apply to each set of trees, you do the math on that. Um, you could have a couple trees on site that are significant and, you know, obviously that ratio is gonna tip a lot faster, you're gonna have to save a lot more. And then is there any consideration in that point valuation for types of trees that maybe aren't going to survive well, um, post-development? Since that seems to be a consistent problem where, you know, it's, it's, again, like I love saving trees, I love the idea. Practically a lot of times it just doesn't turn out well in the end. Um, and part of that is because some trees just really can't be left where, where they are, um, after development takes place. And part of that is because some trees just really can't be left where, where they are, um, after development takes place.
Sure, sure. Certain trees will, will need to be removed for, for development. And that will just come, become part of the trees that are given a point. And then they'll be, um, it'll be part of what you subtract to get to be, to get to be your, um, percentage of tree removal points that you may need to mitigate for. Answer your question. So any, any tree that's in the significant habitat area outside the riparian habitat boundary will need to be inventoried if it, if it's over six inches tall. And six inches in diameter, excuse me. And so, um, the point, half of those points neither, you, you get to either need to be, the trees need to be replanted or you need to preserve half to get to that threshold.
Okay, I'll, I'll have one follow-up and then I'll be quiet and let other people with their hands up go. So if an arborist comes in and says this tree in this location is not, regardless of the, like the, the prescriptive standards that are, that are in place, because it's hard to, hard to cover everything with the prescriptive process. If an arborist comes in, the environmental expert we bring in comes in and says, this tree is not going to, it's not going to be a safe tree, um, after this development activity takes place. That still gets counted in the inventory even though it's not a viable tree?
I think under the process that we're looking at right now, yes, it would be. Because there, there are choices to where the development occurs. And so you would be making the choice that we're going to put the development here. That then puts this tree maybe in a less tenuous situation. So I think that would count as a tree probably that would be then removed and would have to be mitigated under this scenario.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Who you within the building industry and discussing this with, who are your stakeholders that you're working with on this during the technical process?
We have a group of, um, people on the technical advisory committee. Did you say from, for, from the building community?
From, from the residential and commercial building industry.
We have, um, Matt, uh, Wellner is on our technical advisory committee. And then we've met with a group of, of developers separately a few weeks ago to help, to help, kind of share their thoughts about, um, some of the challenges that, that, that they were having and to kind of unveil what the code regulations, um, look like. We also have met, um, with a few other, um, developers independently to talk more about the in, inventory that we're doing. You can see the technical advisory committee membership on, um, on our website. There's a, there's a webpage that has the technical advisory committee members. So Chair Lockwood is on the committee as well as Commissioner, uh, Will.
Do we have an actual list of the developers we talked with?
Um, we, we don't have it in our heads right now, but we could.
Okay, it doesn't have to be given to me right now.
Yep, yep, we could get you the list.
Okay, that'd be great. Second question I had on this was, uh, just in this tree value point situation system we're talking about. And I, I'm certainly sympathetic to the fact that you're making this up as you go. It's not easy. But i- in general terms, when you're doing development, usually when we're looking at mitigation, we're looking at, you know, one to two, uh, you know, one tree, two mitigation plantings, one tree, four mitigation plantings. Would it still be transferred to that kind of idea? Or would it be more caliper based on what you're, you're trying to replace with? What are kind of the, it, it just kind of give me an idea what your thoughts are there. You know, one of the hardest things to do is find, uh, replacement caliper trees that, that equal, even a part of what a significant tree might be. So I just kind of, kind of wanted a little more background on that, if you could give it to me.
Sure, the, we're looking at, um, app, applicants could use existing trees on the site that maybe weren't a regulated tree. They might be under six inches, uh, tall. They could use that as a mitigation tree that, that's already there.
Six inches tall or six inch caliper?
Six inch caliper, excuse, under six inch caliper. They could use that tree and get, that, get those points. Um, native trees, um, would be, um, required. And, um, I, I believe the regulations would account for the trees need to be two inches in diameter at least. And we're asking that half of the, half of the tree value points are retained. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one, um, replacement value.
So as it is right now, it, we have a, a table in the, and what we have right now is a draft set of regulations that we're reviewing. But in there is a, a table that, um, says how many points there would be for these, these different types of trees. So if it's a, a new replacement tree of a certain size, um, it gets a certain number of points. If it's a, a tree that's currently on site, but smaller than six inch diameter or breast height, it would get a certain number of points. And then you would just need to add up the number of points to get to fifty percent.
And in theory, off-site mitigation would still be allowed as well where necessary, right?
We're talking about whether off-site mitigation would be allowed and/or a possibly a fee in lieu. If it can't happen on site, so we, that's one of the discussion points. And I think that's one of our questions that we have for, um, the public tomorrow night, for people to weigh in on whether that's, whether those are options that they think we would need to, or should explore more.
Thank you.
Oh, I think Commissioner Morbidu is next.
I don't have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, it's, um, Commissioner Whips. Yeah, this is. Sorry about not being able to see very clearly. Commissioner Whips.
All right, just dovetailing off of, uh, what Mr. Frey was, I think, alluding to. And that kind of raised a question in my head as well. Let's just paint a picture very simple. There's a tree that may have five good years left, but in the middle of the development. It's kind of a question of depreciation or how, you know, how many years left useful do we have in this tree to develop around it or take it down and remove it? So, um, having a tree fall in the middle of a subdivision and kind of like what we went through, the ice storm is an extreme example. But I kind of see what your, your question is like, are we weighing out, uh, on the older scale, on the useful life of these trees versus still giving it the same amount of points of saying one is just over six in di- six inches in diameter? Cause that obviously has a longer, uh, life to it. So on the other scale is, you know, five years, three years, seven years? Where, where's kind of the balance on the useful life of that tree? And the, uh, and is it going to be weighted the same, uh, point wise? That's just the kind of question scenario that went through my head after hearing Mr. Frey talk.
And we can, yeah, we can talk with our consultants about that. It looks like.
Commissioner McLennan.
Yeah, so I, I had a question about, so this process all assumes that, um, the developer is going to go in and do these calculations prior to development. And I'm just wondering, based on some personal experience in my area of the county, you know, are we considering any policies or procedures for when a developer goes in, without doing any kind of study, without, you know, looking at the tree value points and just levels a couple acres that turn out to be in an S N R area? It's really hard after the trees are already gone to kind of value them. So what are we going to do about, you know, the unscrupulous or maybe just naive developer that goes into one of these areas and mows down an old growth forest? Um, and then kind of says, well, you know, the trees are already gone. How are we going to figure out what to do in those types of situations?
Great question. So we, there, there are a couple of code sections that we're looking at, um, updating. Section four twenty-two is the one that has all of our significant natural resource regulations in it. Section four oh seven is where we have the tree requirements when development is not proposed. But there are trees within, um, a significant natural resource area that, that may, that someone may want to take down. So we are looking at updating those regulations. You are not supposed to do that without a permit, um, at this point. But sometimes it does happen. And so we are looking at, um, what else can we put in that section? We haven't talked yet about, um, penalties or anything like that, but that could be something that is considered.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, uh, feel like this is a good time to do a shout out. I know the, uh, county has been working on, did a, um, heat mapping project this summer. And that, my understanding is that information is going to be released during Public Health Week, I think in early April. But, uh, when the heat dome happened and, um, we lost many community members, I really showcased all the, I mean, the high heat areas in town. And this, this, uh, heat mapping that was done used scientists, um, and measured heat across the region, actually. It's going to, I haven't seen the data. I'm really excited. But I think it's going to showcase the critical need for parks and trees and shade canopies, um, to literally keeping people alive and, um, in their homes. So just like, I hope we can use as a tool or at least as a point of reference.
We have seen a draft of that map.
Don't be jealous.
Any other questions? Not seeing any other hands up.
So we have the, the final slide, which is with our next steps. Yeah, so let's see. We're, we have our community forums coming up. We have three different, uh, three separate, um, options for, for people. We have, uh, on March twenty-first, which is tomorrow, at five P M., we're going to be over at the Washington Street Conference Center, starting at five P M. Our presentation will be at six P M. tomorrow. Then we have a, a Zoom event, which will be April second at six P M. So we'll be using the same format and question and answer for people, as well via Zoom. And then one thirty at, uh, on April sixth, which is a Saturday, over at the Cedar Hills Recreation Center. So kind of going across county, county and different times. And hopefully we'll capture people at a good time to talk about significant natural resources. We're looking to, um, publish the regulations, um, uh, in the draft form, um, in late May. And we're ordinance hearings were expected to start in late June. And you'll see that coming your way around that time. And board action is expected by October first, and that is the, um, date for our enforcement order, what they've indicated as when we need to have regulations adopted by.
I'm sorry, what was the date you need regulations adopted by?
October first.
And also which section is being replaced? Is it four twenty-two or?
So likely this will be coming in three ordinances. We haven't finalized that yet, but there will be changes to, um, the comprehensive framework plan. We do have, um, policies in there and, and several maps. Then the community plans will all be amended. That's where we have the maps now. And so we'll need to update those maps. And then also, uh, we're looking at the, some of the strategies in there and the design elements. And then the third part will be, um, our community development code changes. And that will primarily focus on section four twenty-two, but there are some other related sections. So four oh seven is where we have, um, some other tree requirements. We'll have definitions in section one oh six, I think. And then in section two oh two, it's a definition, definitions of development and what's, what's excluded from development. So there'll be some of those kind of related code sections, but the, the focus will be four twenty-two. So it'll be a lot of.
Yes, that's a long list. Any other questions or comments?
That all needs to happen by October first?
Yeah. And the, I mean, the October first, um, that was, we have an enforcement order that we're under in the state, uh, from the state. And they directed us to, um, revise our regulations and they gave us the October first date as the, the date to meet. So that's what we're working towards.
So, so properties that have mapped wildlife habitat on them cannot develop during this time are, with our old mapping. So it is kind of critical to update our maps to reflect where, where we have the wildlife habitat. So there are, there are a small number of folks that are anxiously awaiting new regulations.
Not seeing any other hands up, so thank you very much.
And, and just a final thing, I think we will plan to be back, at least probably a couple of times before we have the ordinance hearings. As we get this a little further refined, we'll want to talk with you more and see what other questions we can answer and research you might want us to do before we actually get into the hearings. We are planning probably for three hearing dates. Since there, there will be some pretty beefy things to talk about. But if we can help prepare you ahead of time with, with some of these briefings, that's our, our goal.
Uh, will you be sharing what you hear at these community forums with us?
Yes. So we, we're starting something, um, for the first time. We're going to have, um, what's called Slido. I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, using a, taking polling, um, in, in real time at the events. And I'm using Q R codes. So we have, uh, about five, four, four or five questions to ask folks. And it will be kind of cumulative, um, for the three events. See what feedback we have, um, on, on some of the, the, the questions. We're going to be writing down the questions that people have at this event. And of course, the Zoom event will be recorded and that will be put up online. We're going to have some paper surveys available too, if people aren't comfortable filling out, you know, playing with Slido. That's the name of the program that we're using. Kind of looking forward to see, hearing what people think, um, while, while they're in the meeting. We got some feedback last time that some, some people were more boisterous than others and didn't feel like a chance to share what they thought. So this is a way to kind of anonymously share their real, their feelings about it.
And we always get a lot of written comments as well. So we'll always have comment cards that people can fill out. This information will be on our website too, and there is a spot for comments there. So we're, um, expecting a lot of feedback. We've got a mailing list of over.
About four thousand.
Well, so we've mailed to all of the property owners that are potentially affected, um, that have this on their property. But then we also have a list of, of interested parties that aren't, aren't property owners potentially. And so.
It could be property owners that are interested in, you know, both. So over four hundred, yeah.
Over four hundred of those and we mailed to over four thousand, four thousand people.
So once the regulations are written and, uh, ordinance is passed and do those property owners again get notified of the changes or is?
That they, um, well, they will receive a notice when, when we, um, are holding the public hearings. Okay, they'll be impacted.
Any other comments or questions?
Uh, it does look like, uh, Commissioner has her hand up.
Thank you. Commissioner Morbidu.
Thanks, Chair. I may be alone in this request, but I might find it helpful if we had, um, a presentation at a future meeting from, um, you know, both sides of the interested parties, the developer representative and maybe a organization, not environmental organizational representative or something so that we could, you know, I, so I can be better informed about the questions to ask and where generally people are landing. And like I said, maybe that's just something that I can do on my own, but thought, um, if others are interested, maybe that's something we could put on the agenda.
Commissioner Kaiser.
I would just echo what, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Worey B. Do said. I think, I, I just think it's invalid. I I just think it's invaluable to hear both sides of those voices. We we end up in our own echo chambers and I like to hear both. And I I I think. I know you guys are gonna be doing a lot of this already ahead of time, but when it comes down to making the P C decision. More input we have, the better. I mean, I love the idea of the polling. To some degree, it you know, sort of depends on who shows up to, right? So it's it's all part of the process and I wanna I wanna have as much of that information as possible before we make this decision. So. Anything you can offer. You know, bring to the table, we we would appreciate in terms of different voices from different industry and or walks of life. Thanks.
I'm not seeing other hands. Is that right? No other hands?
Other hands.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further comment or question, thank you both very much. Our next item is consideration of minutes. We have one set of minutes. Look at. This is from February twenty first. Twenty twenty four. Does anyone have any corrections or additions for this set of minutes? Not seeing anyone offer that. So without objection, the minutes for February twenty first, twenty twenty four are accepted as submitted. Does anyone, any commissioner have an announcement or a comment they'd like to share communication with all of us? Not seeing any. Move on. Next item is adjournment. Is there any objection to adjourning? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.